All in order. Do the roll call. I showed Julie Stoffer and Randy Snead as absent. Everybody else is here. What would you put ahead? Let's stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for September 20th, 2017, regular session.
Yes, for September 20th session is submitted for approval. That's the last meeting.
No. Was it?
Yes.
20th.
Right, but these are the 20th. These are October 4th.
This is October 4th.
So it's September 20th.
Yeah, that's right.
But it had the last name.
No, that isn't right.
No, because we approved minutes for September 4th.
September 4th. It says, "The minutes from the September 20th, 2017 regular session were submitted for approval." That's what it says.
I think it's just the wrong date.
Yeah.
September 20th submitted for approval at the last meeting. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I changed that date today, too. It did say.
Six.
Six. I don't remember that six. Sorry.
What about you?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. A motion is second to approve the minutes for September 20th, 2017, regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Citizens input.
From last time or now? From, I just have the first one I mentioned, so I'm kind of just watching the motion and stuff. I have some questions and stuff.
What kind of questions you got? What's your name first?
Jeremiah Inez.
Go ahead.
I live on Apple Street.
Okay.
My main thing with the EMT response team because I, as many of us, as, as most of us in this, in life have mental problems.
Okay.
Well, I was wondering if there's a way we can improve the emergency response team because last time I called EMT, called for EMTs, the cop was there within five, within a few minutes. That wasn't a big deal. I have epilepsy and is anybody aware of what epilepsy is? Okay. The, and the response time from your EMTs to respond was another 10 minutes at least. I understand it's a volunteer, but is there a way we could kind of make it a, try to transfer it to a full-time firehouse like where it has people on staff all the time where people that run away from their jobs and you actually have firefighters and EMTs. Is there a way we can kind of work on that to make it available for us?
We have discussed that and right now your community can't warrant the expense of full-time staffing.
Now, is there a way you could ask for the government assistance or any community support like, you know, from the county?
Well, there's always grants for employment, but it's always, it's for full-time already, not to start up full-time in certain areas, but maybe we can check into it.
What I was trying to check into too, but I'm just, you know, because sometimes stuff happens and, you know, you guys can't make it there on time because, you know, life, life happens. That's pretty much all I'm saying. If there's a full-time, so, and then the second thing was, is there, because it seems like to me, I've talked to, is wanting to leave Argus because of how it's, the taxes are getting higher and not maintaining certain things. Like on our road, we have a tree that's literally growing into the road. And I asked Susan yesterday about it. She said, since it's on their property, but it's growing into like body wrapping around the septic lines and everything at home, we're just going to do nothing about it. And we're afraid it's falling because there's a transformer right between me and my neighbor's house. And we don't want to fight and lose our home. And so is there, I have a lot, I could be up there all night. I have a lot of frustration built up because I'm a medical condition. I could die from having one and I talk, I'm just trying to help figure out for the best of the community needs health coverage area, you know? Not just mine, but everybody's because we all have relatives that have illnesses or family or siblings or brothers, sisters, it don't matter. I was might be concerned because it's everybody's problem. We all have it in our life daily.
Correct.
Well, we've, as, as everybody knows, the town owns no trees. It's, it's just the way it is.
Right.
Since it's growing in, in our street, a tree is probably sure of it.
Talking about, somebody must add some pullback in the day because that tree is in the road. They poured the curb around that thing, so.
Yeah.
Somebody must add some pull, so I'm not having that tree taken down, so.
Yeah, and we're afraid that it's, that it's dead. Yeah, it died, you know, I was going to say it died and, you know, me, we're just worried about our road because if something happens, we're going to lose power and you guys are going to have fires and, you know. That tree shouldn't be still there. They should have taken care of it.
We'll check, we'll check into the tree.
Yeah. That's another, that was one of our issues.
And we'll check into the.
Do you know what the address is where that tree is?
310 Apple Street.
That's where the tree is, 310 Apple?
Yeah, it's Bloom White House. I live right across the street, so, yeah. Yeah, that's where it is.
It may not be the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah, because it's, it's about that far into the road. The root, the trunk is, and top of it's just dead.
All right, well, thank you. Well, we'll check into the tree and we'll also look into seeing what we could possibly do about making a full-time EMT, EMT position, but we'll see what we can do with it.
Well, I'll also look into some stuff for it too because I just want to try to help the community best I can to make it a better town and make everybody happier. You know, like even with jobs, I mean, you know, everybody's losing jobs. It don't matter, maybe we can figure out something we can do to draw more people here for jobs even.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of possibilities out there. It's just how you gotta work it.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, you're more than welcome.
Any other citizens input? What was your name?
Jeremy, Jeremy Inez.
Jeremy?
Jeremy or Jeremiah? You need to know I spell the last name, I hope you. It's pretty hard. Y-A-N-E-Z.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome. Old Business Attorney Report.
Folks on the 405 South Michigan Street, we turned in our application for the inspection warrant. Court granted that. Got an inspection warrant on the 26th of September. Jamie Lindstrom and Chuck DeWitt served that warrant, which is basically announced to the inspection of that building. They went in there the next day on the 27th. I think they did have some contact with the property owner at that time. But when they went in, Jamie can chime in here anytime he wants. He was there, totally saw firsthand, but they noted the condition on the inside of the building. They didn't really, don't know that they saw any major structural issues. Now, we don't have any report yet from Chuck DeWitt waiting to get that. But nothing in there that was, I guess, of immediate concern. The property owner did indicate that they received a letter that we had sent back in August, but instead of contacting Chuck DeWitt for a range of time to get in there, they simply went down and they did do some cleaning work or did do some of the, addressed some of the issues that were contained in that letter. But I don't know that they've gotten everything 100% fixed up, taken care of. So, end of the day, we are waiting to get the inspection report from Chuck DeWitt. Jamie, you can add to it as you see fit, but.
Actually, I think we covered it pretty good. People waiting on Chuck's report, but it was, like you said, there was nothing that needed immediate attention. And they did clean up a lot of the things from before, all the pictures that we had. All that was cleaned up, so. No holes in the roof. I mean, there was, you know, we'll wait for the report, but there was nothing major that needed attention in there, so.
That's all I had to report. Thank you, Derek.
I move to accept the attorney's report.
Second. Got a motion is second to accept your attorney's report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Or that's 2017-22, the salary ordinance. Right, I was just asking about the line.
Oh.
What's that?
This is the. That's what I think.
Yeah?
That's the change.
That's the change, yeah.
Do we need to take off wastewater operator in charge?
It will go to that after his rendition is over.
Right, but we have a. It just doesn't seem pertinent right at the moment.
No, sure. Shane, we can take that out. It's there.
I move to accept salary ordinance 2017-22, suspend the rules on all three readings.
Second.
Got a motion is second to accept salary ordinance 2017-22, suspend the rules, pass on all three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordinance 2017-21 for 2018 budget.
Be ready.
Yes, reading. So we just got to do it on the second reading, second, third. Just do second, third, right? What was that? I missed it.
I move to pass ordinance 2017-21 on the second and third readings.
I'll second that.
Got a motion is second to pass ordinance 2017-21 for 2018 budget on the second and third readings. In order of discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Stain because of our department. Our department can't legally vote too much. Motion passes. Board openings. We have an opening on the Marshall County Tourism, the Planning Commission. And if you're interested, submit a letter of interest to Lisa. Oh, okay, this is the original.
Right.
That's the original. I thought this was a change.
No, that's not a change.
All right, we're going to go to new business. Jamie Lindstrom, the Swallow quote.
Yeah, um, we got the rate study done. Now what we're looking to do is the rules and regulations, have those gone through. Should have in your packet. Swallow gave us a quote of just under $5,000 to do that. What that'll do is go through everything in our rules and regs that it needs updated. I've seen some other towns and I got another one from Empa, just kind of a, um, a blank, you know, kind of going through. Ours is about a third of the size as these other ones I'm looking at. So I think there's some things that are missing in there. I know we need to make some changes in ours now, so I think we need to have them go through and do it.
That's just the one-time fee?
Yeah, I mean, I don't remember the last time they were done. I mean, there's pretty much the same ones when I started, so it just, you know, over 20 years, 30 years, however long it's been, it needs, it needs updated. Getting the language right and all that stuff. And like I said, I think there's some things in there that need added, you know?
We'd have to change the date on it.
And why does it say August 29th, 2016? Is that when they quoted this?
I bet I don't.
It's a year ago.
Man, you must've got the date wrong.
Top to bottom says August 2017. Back on.
Never know, theirs is 16 and then yours says 17, so I don't know what deal that is.
I remember we wrote it down to update it.
I think it'll take about two months is what it looks like, so.
Got a second?
Second, yes.
Got a motion is second to go ahead and have Jamie Lindstrom do the Swallow quote. Have Swallow update our electrical rules and regulations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ordinance 2017-23, the Community Crossing Grant Fund.
We have to create a community crossing grant because we were awarded that grant. So we have to create a fund for it according to the DGLF. Every fund number 258, we will then fund $46,589.78 into that fund, which would be 25% of the $186,359.13 that we got the paving done for. So then at our next meeting, you guys will vote on an additional appropriation for the $46,000 to be spent out of that fund. We, we had set the money aside in the last budget, but we didn't have the fund created. That was a new thing that came up this summer that the DGLF wanted it done that way. So you will vote on an additional appropriation at the next meeting to spend the $46,000 out of that fund.
Okay. Motion. Accept ordinance 2017-23, suspend the rules on all three readings.
Second.
Got a motion is second to do ordinance 2017-23, suspend the rules, pass on all three reads, make a fund, Community Crossing Grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have to do anything with that? Do you?
To me, it's not good, Jeremy.
All right. Any other new business?
We had discussed a comment box. Will we go in four weeks with that?
I thought we voted on it. Was it the minutes?
Yes, I remember that. I don't think we voted on it, discussed it.
We all agreed to it.
Right, but I knew for you about the comment box, I'm sorry. I don't have anything to do with it. I will make sure I get it out. It's time. It's time to start thinking. I don't think it's decision time yet, but start planning.
Yeah.
Some way of options.
Right.
And the employee appreciation dinner.
Right.
Do you want to have it here in town or?
Let's get a price and see where it comes.
Attorney George is asked. George is asking.
I mean, we do have the VNR, so are you, the only thing we wouldn't need is your kind of alcohol at the VNR, so.
No, it won't make me brood.
So, I don't know.
On TV, I said that, too.
I mean, are you willing to consider catering to that location or do you want to just have it at a nice?
I think, yeah, I think we should, we should have it somewhere besides the VNR.
Like a great, great big Thanksgiving table where everybody get around it.
All of a sudden, you know, we're going to all in it. And, you know, you shouldn't be involved in it except for planning. When it happens, you shouldn't be involved in it at all because it's an appreciation dinner for you too.
Well, we just had discussed about the U shape and, you know, people being able to, but I'll make sure we're.
Swamp light, here we go.
We get a quote from.
Swamp light, here we go.
Do the first class?
It could. Are we going to do anything on town? I asked.
I'm not doing it.
I'm room with you. I, I'm.
I initially called about if we were going to do a scarecrow concert, contest this year.
No concerts.
Hey, Paul, do you know anything about that stuff?
What's up?
Scarecrow contest, maybe decorate the uptown.
We haven't done anything on Reed Boulevard, apologize, but that didn't come up at our last meeting, so no. Okay. We were talking other things that properties and such, we'd already brought before the last meeting, so. All right. Sorry. Sorry. You motion to adjourn?
Flag number on flames.
Flames.
I thought we knew. Geez.
Planes, 1102, 1162 or something.
Going somewhere, Dustin?
You're at a parish, man. Slow it down.
Two and a half hours.
Please, you're here. I asked you to come to anything else, you know?
I think, no. Okay. Of the petition, they're ready to be sent out. We got 957 signatures, so not bad for the petition on the J-turns. Um, I'm asking you tonight if you would vote against the J-turns. Culver did that in their regular meeting and I, I'm just asking if.
They had a resolution vote in there or something.
I thought it isn't an open vote.
We can, we can make an open vote, but I think they.
Just to let the minutes reflect that the town is officially, you know, for or against the J-turns. And then I just need signatures on this new letter that I took out the 10 days. You know, it, it used to say 10 days and it does not do that anymore, so.
Well, they're passing that down. Streets went good. Came in and out quick.
Hold on, Jim.
Boys work fast. Are you guys having to deal with all the streets in Argus or just certain ones?
Certain ones, certain years, depends on the funds.
Right, I mean, I know that happens, you know, guy running out of money.
The other question I had for you was the flag pulls in and that's going down to Memorial Park, correct?
Yes.
And right where the drinking front was, want to take that out, cut it in there? There's a plaque that goes with it, too.
Yes.
Anybody have that?
Jay Stoffer.
Okay. Good. We're kind of getting that in here real quick.
Do you just do it on floating or you use some tube or?
It's a tube, so we'll just.
Oh, they've got.
Yeah, there's a tube. We'll just put that in there as a sleeve and then, uh, that should be easy. The plaque's going to be the harder part. Figured out how we want to do that.
How many more should I?
I just, I wanted to see what that letter was. Oh, she was looking at it, I didn't want to just.
I'm sorry, I, um, it's the same letter that you signed before. I just took the 10 days out of it.
Okay.
It had said before that we were doing it for 10 days, but then after in dots meeting, we decided to extend that period out since the comment period was until October the 9th. But we wanted to get it sent out tomorrow so that it reaches the offices before the 9th.
Do we need like a letter to go with this one, Derek, or? A letter to go with that? If we're going to vote on, or we're just doing it to put it in our minutes?
Oh, okay.
I, I just think that you should officially, I mean, to do a vote with officially put it in the minutes that the town is either for or against, you know what I mean? I don't think that we have the right to do a resolution because it's really not our language, but.
You can, you could do a resolution.
You can, you could do a resolution, um, we don't have one prepared to be sent in, then probably too late, but, I mean, a voice vote interest expressing the official position of the town of Argus that you're against the J turns.
Which is fine, you can do it by voice vote, you can do a resolution. However you wanna do it, but if it's just voice vote. Alright. I'm, I'm, I move that they, uh, put in a minutes that the town council of Argus opposes the J turns at US 31 and 10 and State Road 110.
Second.
And Dewey Street also, yes, correct. We have a motion in a second that we put in the minutes that the town of Argus opposes the J turns at 10 and 31 and 31 and 110. Dewey Street. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Claims 1102 to 1162.
The total docket for, um, this period is $339,120.93. Claiming numbers are 1102 through 1161. Top five claims are as follows, Impa at $176,733.22, Jackson Services at $35,000, Town of Argus Payroll, number 19, at $34,337.05, Anthem Health Insurance at $15,629.56, and Republic Services at $12,113.64. The top five claims total $273,813.47 and represent 81% of the total docket.
I move to accept claims Devonoff 2 through 1161.
Second, got a motion in a second to accept claims 1102 to 1162. Says 62. Sorry. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. My agenda says 61, or 62.
I got one more thing for Jamie, the trash camp, would we uptown, could we?
They should all have moved, moved everything to the corner, so.
Use the same ones?
Yeah.
I didn't even go through there, just went out for a little town back.
Yeah, we moved them last week, so I, I haven't heard anything more about them, so. I guess they're working.
Some of the planters were taken away, three of them.
Yeah, yeah.
I forgot to say in my attorney's report that I will not be at the next meeting, I'll see if I can either get Bert to tell him for that. So, just to let you know.
Alright.
Oh, wait a minute, what is that?
I won't be at the next meeting either.
I won't be at the next meeting either, I'll be on vacation.
I will not be at the next meeting, I'll be in Middlebury.
Oh my goodness.
We've had meetings.
So, I will be in.
Alright, well, hard time with Mrs. Suzanne here, sorry, you guys stay in town.
Motion adjourned.
I'll be out state.
Alright, thanks. Motion adjourned.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.